Abigail?
We have enough.
Perfect. Ah, there's Mr. Coy. Perfect. Okay. My start meeting. Welcome, everyone, here to hopefully this is our quote last virtual meeting anyway here. June 28, 2021. And at this time, I'm calling this order. I do have a new flag that Mr. Coy put behind me. So if everyone would be so kind here to join me for the pledge, I will move along. And I'm above my thing, but that's okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wonderful. Thank you, everybody. Joe, temporarily. Hi, Joe. Joe's not in the car this time. That's a good thing. See, I do have Ms. Amy and it looks like she's in a car, but okay. This time, I'll start with roll call. Please, Abby.
Philkins?
Here in the city of Cadillac.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just remind everybody as you say your name to please state where you're calling from. Greg? Dave Gregg?
Like John's helping him with something?
All right, we will come back to him. Bunce?
Here.
From where?
Oh, from Cadillac, 427 Krippen.
Thank you. Asher? Bowman?
Here, City Cadillac.
Bent? It's not here. And Puffin?
Here, City of Cadillac.
Did we get Dave's unmute?
Can can John unmute him if he's the host?
Dave, can you unmute yourself like I showed you with the mouse?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Can you please state where you're calling from, Dave?
Cadillac.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we good there, Abby?
Yes.
Okay. Before I get to the approval of the agenda, was asked to make a small change on it to take new business and move it up just before public hearings. That way, poor Ms. Amy doesn't have to sit in her car. And it hopefully isn't a long one that Mr. Coy will get us through. So with that change, I would now take for an approval of this evening's agenda with that change.
Mr. Chair, is there a reason we have two public comments? Could we eliminate number two and just keep the one at the end?
Can, I guess, because I do have a public comment at the end. Is any objections to that, Mr. Wallace?
To what, eliminate the first eliminate the first public comment?
Yes, that was his request.
Well, we've never we've never done it before, but you know, I get.
Was there a reason to have two?
There's there's no legal requirement for two. You have to have at least one.
Okay. Well, all right, we could just make that part of the change if you'd like to move new business ahead of the public hearings and to skip the first public comment.
Would we like to permanently delete the first public comment?
Is that a yes, John?
I would.
Do you want to take a full vote from the board for that?
I think historically, we've had two. So then when we have, you know, public hearings that folks have an opportunity to share with us any information that they have that they'd like at the beginning. But of course, in a public comment, we also have public comment for that particular hearing. So I don't see why it would be necessary to have that first one.
I think it always confuses the two. Poor Mr. Puffin's trying to get people to comment on things that aren't eligible for comments.
And then they kind of. I've always been instructed if it deals with what's on our plate, wait. Okay. Perfect. Are we are we good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I still need an approval for the agenda.
Motion, please.
Support.
What, second? Bowman and Philkins, yes?
All right, Bowman and Philkins. And we will take call. Greg?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
And Puffin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, hopefully, everybody had a chance to review minute meetings from April 26, 2021. For those we didn't, yeah, April, May, we did not have a May meeting, conversation to the public. I I saw no hiccups in in them. Personally.
Mr. Chair, I think I think Mr. Whitilla is installing an in-ground pool and not an underground pool. I'm under new business B. And Ariel just needs to, I think that's the wrong spelling for Ariel, but otherwise, they look great.
You mean, I missed that?
The spelling of Ariel in the same line?
Yeah, is that is that the right spelling?
I don't.
It's not actually showing up on my words, so.
Right, it's well, it's not exactly underground, but it's in the ground. Okay, good good catch, Joe.
With those with those edits, I would move your approval.
Should be coming right back. Just a few minutes.
Again, I'll support.
What is this?
Okay.
Okay. Are we ready to move on now?
All right, approval of the minutes. Bowman?
Should be right back.
Bunce?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Puffin?
Yes.
And Gregg?
Yes.
Thank you.
And you, we have another member on board, Abigail?
Oh, sorry, didn't see it pop on. Greg Rusher, do you approve of the minutes?
I do. I could not locate the link. Thank you, Joe.
Good. Having done that, and I hope is the they probably, no, we're good. So, okay, so new business right now, we have a request here for a land division request for Linden Street. Legal description, east half of Lot 8 and east half lot of 9, Cobson Mitchell. Third added City of Cadillac split slash combined on 515 2013 from 10-052-00-016-00.00. Having read that, fun. Mr. Coy, are you taking us from here?
Well, I I will. Hopefully, there's not too much background noise. I'm sitting at a Hampton Inn in Sue St. Marie and the breakfast area. I I think I'm okay here, but Amy Gibbs is with us, the director of the Wexford Osceola Habitat for Humanity. They own a property that is on Linden Street at the corner with Chestnut and also the corner with Walnut, directly across the street from the Cadillac High School football field. This, there was a group of lots there, and there was a property exchange, I believe, back in 2003. But it basically, this was combined as a new property in '03. What they are looking to do is split it into two equal-sized lots. Both lots that they are going to create meet the minimum standards for the R2 zone districts. So at 82 and a half feet in width, it exceeds the 75 feet required, minimum requirement for R2. And at a little over 10,000 square feet, it meets the 9,000 square foot minimum. So they're looking to do this to create two lots. I do not know at this time, and I don't even know if Amy knows if their intent is to build on those lots or to sell them to somebody for them to build a new home on. But they want to create the two. These lots are in a platted area. And both the Land Division Act in Michigan and our ordinance basically reads that if properties are in a platted area, Planning Commission needs to approve the division. Whereas if it's not in a platted area, it's an administrative approval. And because the two lots meet the minimum standards for a lot, you know, administratively, we would more or less just approve it immediately. But the ordinance and the Land Division basically says you folks need to review it before it's approved. That's kind of it in a nutshell.
Mike, does it need to go to council or does it stop with Planning Commission?
It does not need to go to council at all.
Okay.
I have a motion written if when you if you're ready to entertain a motion on the on the application.
Or does anybody have any questions for Mr. Coy before the motion?
Oh.
Okay. Go ahead with the motion, John. Please.
Oh, wonderful. Says host disabled screen sharing. I just can't believe. I can read it. I can read it. Okay.
Perfect.
To approve lot split of the property owned by the Wexford Osceola Habitat for Humanity on Linden Street as presented in their application. The lot split will create two equal-sized lots of 82 feet, 6 inches in width and a depth of 132 feet.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Perfect. Roll call, please, Abby.
Okay, I have Philkins as number one. Who is number two?
Mr. Bowman.
Thank you. Bowman?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Gregg?
Yes.
And Puffin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any words to Ms. Amy, Mike?
Thank you. I am actually sitting in Grand Rapids right now on vacation, and I wanted to be at this meeting. So I appreciate you guys taking this and 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 helping us out. So thank you for your help, and I can exit the meeting now, right?
Perfect. Yes, you can. Have a great.
Have a great night.
Great vacation.
Thank you.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay, now, we have two public hearings for conversation for this evening. First is a rezone application here for Christopher and Jennifer Chucky. And I don't know if any of them are with us.
We are here, and it's pronounced checkai.
And I'm sorry, I.
No, that's okay. Nobody ever gets it right, so totally understand.
I was willing to take comments.
I'm Jennifer, and my husband's on as well.
Oh, perfect.
Hello.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
So anyway, run that back by me one more time, please.
So it's checkai. So if you think about like a check in your eyeball, like checkai.
Checkai. I had the wrong syllables. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. So this is at 2713 Sunnyside Drive. Their request here is to rezone from R3 to TS2. Having read this, I now will turn this to Mr. Wallace.
Thank you. And then I will give a brief summary of my staff report. And then then you could open that up to the the public hearing.
Okay.
As the chairman just mentioned, we are looking at taking a property on Sunnyside Drive in the west side, more or less in the west side business district, and changing the zoning from R3, one-family residential district to a TS2 tourist service district. I'm going to have to rely on my staff report. I summarized some of the key points in a PowerPoint, which I won't be able to show. But if you have copies of your staff report with you, you will see from the photos that I've included that the existing development in that area is comprised of either commercial properties or residential properties. The property immediately west of the proposed rezoning site is the Coldwell Banker Real Estate Office. The there are probably four or five other single-family homes immediately adjacent to the subject property. And just to the northeast of the property, you have a vacant old commercial bank building on that street as well. I think it enters off of 115, but it also comes out to Sunnyside Drive. In essence, the existing land uses, as we've talked about just now, our single-family and commercial. And then also, and this is also, keep in mind, this is also right at the juncture of M115 and M55. Right at that corner there, you have a gasoline service station. You also have some retailing office in the nearby area. The zoning around the site is predominantly the TS2, which they want to rezone into. So it's not like creating a a spot site that's in a separate district. It's almost entirely surrounded on on three sides. It's surrounded by TS2 already. And so putting this into a TS2 would be would make a lot of sense from the current zoning scenario for the city zoning ordinance. The city's master plan identifies the subject property to be designated for medium-density residential development. And with a single-family home on it being used in a what could be used for a short-term rental or other uses in the TS2, I think it would fit in with what the master plan has designated. I'll I'll read briefly through the considerations for the rezoning and give the answers that I came up with as things that we should consider, the Planning Commission should consider in looking at the rezoning. Number one, is the proposed classification compatible with surrounding land uses and zone district classifications? The proposed TS2 zoning district would provide for uses which are compatible with the surrounding land uses and zoning districts. The predominant zoning district around the proposed rezoning is the TS2 district. The lots immediately west and north of the proposed sites are in the TS2 district. Is the proposed rezoning consistent with the city master plan? If not, or if questionable, does the request represent an appropriate use of the land based on changes and/or other factors that have occurred subsequent to the adoption of the plan? The master plan has designated the proposed rezoning site for medium-density residential development. Although the TS2 zoning district would allow for commercial uses, it also allows for tourist homes for temporary lodging. Since the site already has a home developed on it and is being proposed for residential use or potential short-term rental use, I believe the proposed rezoning would be consistent with the master plan. Are the existing public facilities and services capable of accommodating the land uses permitted by the proposed classification? Yes, the public facilities and services are capable capable of supporting the uses permitted by the proposed rezoning. Is the proposed classification equal to or more appropriate than the existing zone district classification? I believe the proposed classification is equal to or more appropriate than the existing zone district classification. The TS2 comes close to surrounding the subject site, and the TS2 district is intended to promote tourism and tourist-related accommodations. And does the request meet the criteria required by the zoning ordinance for the intended use? Yes, the request does appear to meet the criteria required by the zoning ordinance for the TS2 district. And then, in general, my observations on the request. In consideration of the existing zoning, existing land use, and the city's master plan, I would recommend that the proposed rezoning be be granted. Past planning, as well as current planning, has this area of the city being planned for tourist-oriented uses. I am currently in the process of rewriting the city's zoning ordinance. And in my current draft of that ordinance, I have this area designated as a tourism village district. Creating tourist-oriented housing options in close proximity to tourist-related commercial businesses is a compatible arrangement. And that kind of concludes what I some, you know, had in my report. I do have a proposed motion that I could put up following receipt of public comment during the public hearing.
Thank you, John. So at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. So anyone in our internet audience, virtual audience, that has any comments on this rezoning, please?
I do. I I do unless Chris or Jennifer want to speak first.
Go ahead.
Diane? Well, I live two houses down from the proposed rezoning. And, you know, because it's my neighborhood, I look at that house as a residential house. And the lack of availability of of residential homes in the Cadillac area, it's a beautiful home that would just make a lovely family home for somebody. So, you know, I that's how I look at it. You know, if if it's a like an Airbnb, you know, that would be that would be fine. It's they're going to keep the integrity of the home. But I do know the property is going to be up for sale in probably two months. So the the owners are not going to be dealing with the new owners, whoever it might be, as to what kind of usage they're going to have for that for that residential then-turned-tourist zoning. So, no, I, you know, I I look at it as a residential home, and I would love to keep it in the neighborhood as as residential.
Okay. Thank you, Diane. Anyone else in our virtual audience as input?
I would like to, if I may, please. This is Chris.
Sure, please.
Diane, you had mentioned that you would be fine with Airbnb. That's exactly what it is. It's a VRBO, although it's not listed at the moment, but it is on VRBO and Airbnb, so that is what the use is. Next, you mentioned that you know for a fact that we were putting it up for sale within two months. We have not spoken to a Realtor. We have, we are not under contract. We have that was something that was mentioned. It is not set in stone. We haven't hired a Realtor. We haven't even gone down that path. I think that's all I would have to say.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear. But, you know, regardless, it's still, it would just it would just make a lovely family home. And I know the shortage in Cadillac for lovely family homes is 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 an issue. So that's all.
But if I'm right, if they do sell it, and somebody can still buy it as a home, they don't have to make it a rental?
Would they have to change the the zoning again, John? Okay.
Well.
This I, John, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think the reason for the change is so they can do this Airbnb without a problem. Am I correct, sir?
Right, the TS2, maybe the TS12 are maybe the only districts where we are pretty clear on being able to do short-term rental housing.
But it could be sold, eventually sold as a as a residential home?
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Coy?
John, I just wanted to add with respect to directly across the street from the property, there are three residential homes there now, all of which are Zone TS2, which essentially means they can be used as overnight lodging. If if the owner of those homes wishes, they can rent them as overnight lodging right now, and they don't need anything from the Planning Commission. Two of those three homes have been purchased by Blarney Castle Oil. So there's only one that's owned by a private individual right now. Blarney Castle Oil also now owns the former bank that's right there next door to Joe Host's, his sun-and-snow ski business. And if I'm not mistaken, Blarney Castle has also purchased the former Peterson gas station convenience store across the street. So Blarney Castle has purchased quite a few properties in that area. To my knowledge, they've not purchased the old bait-and-tackle shop. And there is one residential home, but they have purchased quite a few properties in that Cadillac West corridor.
It may or may not be any factor for this rezoning. We don't know what their proposed use is, and we don't even know if it's eligible for being built on that property without some kind of rezoning. So sure, I I don't think we should put too much credence on on that.
I agree.
Prospect.
I agree.
Any other input this evening? From anyone in our audience? Before I close public hearing? Okay, hearing, hearing, nothing. At this time, we'll go ahead and close public hearing. Any questions board members? Any comments from board members? Okay. Then I'm sure we could entertain a motion that Mr. Wallace kind of has.
I could read my draft motion, and you can accept it or amend it.
Okay.
To recommend approval to the city council of the rezoning application by Christopher and Jennifer checkai for the property at 2713 Sunnyside Drive from R3 to TS2, based upon the analysis in the staff report, public comments, and other factual information applicable to the application.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second for Mr. Bowman?
Yes, I second that.
Mr. Bunce? Roll, please, Abby.
Puffin?
Yes.
Gregg?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
And Bowman?
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you, Abby. And thank you, Abby. Uh, good. Chris and Jennifer, we thank you for being here today.
Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
Bye bye.
Thank you. Bye now.
Bye now. Okay, uh, next on our plate, again, public hearing. Uh, zoning ordinance amendment regarding temporary use signs. Specifically, the ordinance would standardize the regulation for all temporary use signs, regardless of their content, and provide a uniform restriction for the number of signs displayed in each parcel, the sign's height, minimum setbacks and spacings from other signs, and limit the amount of time signs can be displayed after the event referenced concludes. Got my glasses on, can't read. Um, having read that, uh, Mr. Wallace, are you?
Yes.
Yes.
I will be uh making a few comments and then just like the previous public hearing, this is a zoning ordinance amendment, so it does require an opening and closing of public hearing, but uh, with respect to uh this proposed change, uh, there's basically two reasons why we are doing this. Uh, there was a Supreme Court case called Reed versus Town of Gilbert. And in that Supreme Court case, the Supreme Court ruled that communities could not regulate signage based on their content. And our temporary sign portion of our ordinance does that very thing. It breaks out temporary signs by real estate, political signs, other types of signs. And so while we can't regulate based on content, we can regulate based on uh uh temporary uh use status for those signs. So what this amendment does is it lumps all the signs that we had uh in those various content categories and puts them into one temporary use uh category. And then resets the sizes and numbers uh of signs that can be allowed under that category. The other problem that we had is uh we didn't have clear regulation on the uh number and size uh of temporary signs under certain scenarios. And so we had a case where we had a proliferation of signs. And we're we're not on solid ground to take any enforcement action to address that subject. So with this change, we would also be addressing the number and size of temporary signs. Uh, and basically, uh, those regulations are contained in Schedule D of the uh proposed uh ordinance amendment. Basically, the Schedule D that you see in the proposed amendment is just a replacement of the Schedule uh D that's in the current ordinance right now. It just takes them out of the different categories like real estate and political and uh addresses them all as one uh type of category for temporary signs. So that's basically it. Uh, it's an attempt to further control uh sign proliferation. And it's also an attempt to come into compliance with the uh ruling from our Supreme Court on that element of zoning.
I have a question, John, before we get going here. Um, it's in the little memo notes at the bottom of the page. Said signs may be displayed and I um during the hours that the single family residence is open, I think that is for real estate. I'm having problems interpreting that that sign would have to be taken in and out if people are home or not home or a house not shown. I don't know.
Which section are you referring to?
Um, under the Schedule D, there's little subnotes, one, two. And this is kind of the 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 last two sentences under number two where it said said signs may be displayed during the hours. And I took it uh this, if that real estate or estate or during the hours that the family residence is open for public inspection. I guess I'm just trying to, does that mean that sign has to be taken in and out if if?
Yes, John, that that's correct. And it's in reference to like a, not a real estate sign advising that the house is for sale per se, but a sign advising that, you know, there's an open house today. Or there's a garage sale today, or it's an estate sale like, you know, today. So you'll you'll commonly find, you know, uh, open house signs that are that are put in place, you know, just during the day that there's an open house. And so this would require that when that open house is done, that you that you take the sign away.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yeah, no problem. Sorry, sorry, uh, John Wallace for just jumping in, but I I.
I I think you're exactly right on that.
What's that?
I think you're exactly right on that. It's it's for event or event oriented uh uh u- use of those signs.
Okay. Mr. Coy, did you have something to add?
Yeah, that item number two specifically addresses what we call off premise, not on premise. Um, what I like about it too is it mentions off premise, um, you know, they they need the property owner's permission.
Great, okay. Uh, before I open the public hearing, uh, any other questions?
I have a question. Um, Mr. Wallace, what, to what extent, you mentioned a proliferation of temporary signs. What is our current ordinance Schedule D or what would be similar to Schedule D say about sizes and number of signs and period of time? How much of a substantive change in all of these categories is this?
Well, you know, and Mike might be able to better address this, but um, I think I think the fact that our current ordinance didn't have clear boundaries for numbers and sizes. Um, I think in one particular case, we might have had as many as uh six or eight signs on one property. And um, Mike, you might be able to better clarify how how many you could do under the existing ordinance. But I I I think it was the fact that we couldn't define the end product of what you could do that was the problem.
Sure. Yes, John. Uh, Joe, um, the Schedule D as it's currently read has nothing in it related to the number of signs that can be put out. So for example, um, we had a residence where a person had, well, I quickly counted eight signs in the front yard. Um, we've also, for example, got a situation of a business that put a dozen temporary signs. Um, you know, out along the roadway. So it it just, you know, most people, most businesses, you'll see one or two. But there have been some instances where it's been so overboard that I think it borders on blight.
Uh huh, yeah. Sure.
I guess I I'm gonna just tell you, I'm totally in favor of content neutrality. I think that's constitutional and needs to change.
That's right.
Definitely in favor of avoiding blight and finding a way to define it. I have a real hard time with government telling private landowners a level of speech that's acceptable. And so at least as it regards arbitrary decisions on that, I might be a no as to that regard. I may be the only one, but I want to share that that's a concern for me, so.
I guess I would just ask, how do you rectify that position with a blight situation?
Well, blight is all about an actual, almost a nuisance. It becomes so ugly as to be terrible. And what we have here is a site, you know, a maximum area per sign of four square feet, that's two by two. And I can have, what, one in on my residential street? I'm not sure of the numbers. But, you know, thirty might be blight, right? Or something that's, so it shocks the conscience. I mean, that's the sort of blight or nuisance or level that that I think, I mean, there's a fine line, right, at some point?
There is.
Question is whether this is the fine line. And I think this is about regulating speech and that I have a trouble with.
You know, and that idea of blight, one could be just the perception that it's just just downright ugly. There can also be just one sign that is offensive, you you know? Um, and whether, how how do you determine, blight, I understand as being something unsightly. But there can be a a sign itself, just individually, that can be unsightly because of its offensiveness. Just, I don't equate the two, but one I can see it being a real nuisance, the other is more of a perceptual thing.
Some of the signs, in some cases, because it's temporary, they're, they do become ugly because they're sc- scrawled out on cardboard or uh, you know, what have you. I mean, uh, they're not professional looking signs.
No.
And so there's no rhyme or reason or order to the how the signs are prepared and presented, and that's why they tend to lead to blight. You know, it's a, it's a challenging piece. You, you know, um, I think everybody can agree you get to a certain number. It's out of character and out and out of reason for what a residential community would be. And I think we could all have a different view of what that number is. But you also got to picture, you know, how many people might take advantage? And how many, if you have one person doing it, it might not be an issue. If you have four people doing it, it might be an issue, you know? And this doesn't dis- distinguish between um accounting for people doing it back, you know, lot to lot to lot. So that part wasn't taken into account.
And we're a community to have a problem, as you say, there's the proliferation of signs in not just one, but three, maybe four places. What recourse do neighbors have to address that issue without confronting whoever is doing this, you know, face to face, which could be problematic?
Well, I think you're right, Dave. The the recourse is to us hoping that we can do something about it. We had numerous contacts uh in this one case. And unfortunately, we, the report back to those folks are that we weren't in a solid position to to really do anything uh without legal challenge. And 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 that's exactly why we're where we're at today.
Yeah, 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 sure. So there may needs to be some mechanism whereby there can be an a this issue addressed and somehow have a way of uh, like you say, regulating it.
You know, and we can obviously change it from what's in this table. Um, we just have to feel comfortable that if that happened next to us or next to our friends and neighbors, that we would, that we would feel comfortable saying that we're okay with that. Um, you know, when they come and they they express their dissatisfaction, I guess.
Do we have any, um, has information been gathered from other communities on what their ordinances look like?
In this particular case, we did not, uh, well, other than maybe what our attorneys and their assistants uh in helping with this may have had access to, that I don't know, but that would be the only um uh checking with other communities. I think the attorneys doing this probably uh did have um some experience with other communities. I just couldn't report on exactly what that would be without checking with them.
Joe, do you have any suggestions that would work for you? Like some of what I'm reading, which I agree with obviously, is that these things are not in the clear vision zones for traffic.
All of those pieces, in addition, in addition to restrictions in Schedule D, all of that stuff is great. That that's all safety, that's, and you know, the statement about harmonious with the character of the surrounding area. I think that's an important phrase and that, to me, guides frankly, good neighborly behavior to some extent.
Okay.
And the moment we institute government telling us, I can't give you a number, uh, John, that that's going to make me feel comfortable. Frankly, the mayor asked a good question on what's otherwise reasonable in other communities. But that's going to show us a number of government regulations of regulated speech and and all of that's fine. I'm just, and at the end of the day, the city council makes the decision, assuming it makes it past here. But that's, it's probably going to be my struggle, unless we got to like a number of, you can't have anything bigger than fifteen square feet or, you know, something that would be perhaps useless, but maybe not. And maybe that's a a fair question for staff.
Well, typical sign of a temporary sign, the four square feet typically meets that objective. Political signs tend to fall within that, uh, real estate signs fall within that. Um, so, uh, and and it's only four square feet in residential zoning districts. In commercial and industrial, I think we're up to thirty two square feet. So we we do change the scale when we switch from residential to commercial. Um, so I I would say we got the size right. I guess it would just be a question of debating what the number should be. You know, if it shouldn't be two, should it be three, should it be four? What what should that number be?
Uh, this is Marcus and and just jumping in uh quickly for a moment, I can advise that, you know, we we did have uh at least one example in town, um, you know, that I'm aware of where there were, I think, upwards of about eight signs in which I personally also received several complaints. And so I think, you know, arguably, you know, eight is is too too much of a number. You know, whether or not two is too little of a number, certainly I think anything, you know, ki- you know, can be can be debated. Um, I I know that uh one of the staff attorneys at the law firm that the city uh uh contracts with, you know, put the draft together for our review. Uh, I'm actually um messaging one of the attorneys now to see if if it was based off of a model or or if he just picked picked two out of the air. Uh, but I think, you know, obviously somewhere uh in in between two and eight would probably be reasonable. Uh, I think we we took a more conservative approach, uh, just trying to maintain, you know, the integrity of of the residential, single family neighborhoods especially uh as best as as best as possible. Um, you know, and, you know, and 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 what we are doing, you know, certainly, uh, Mr. Bowman, you know, i- is regulating speech, uh, but doing it based more on a on a time and manner um, uh, a concept versus on a content uh concept, you know, where we completely, you know, remove that portion from it. And so I think that, you know, the debate is healthy because ultimately, you know, we we are, you know, regulating speech, but we're doing it based upon time and manner versus.
Oh, yeah. I, Marcus, I'd certainly agree. I think this is all constitutional. So there, this is a political and policy decision as opposed to a constitutional one. And I I really appreciate that change, you know, from twenty fifteen case that's now turning into our ordinance six years later, by the way, but.
Twenty fifteen what?
There was a twenty fifteen case.
Right, right, right.
Right. Mr. Coy?
I just wanted to add that because I tend to understand the sign ordinance, uh, which, depending on the font you use, the smaller font is twenty five pages. Um, but for example, temporary signs, if they are installed on an interior window of a home or business, our sign ordinance exempts them.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah.
And that was my question. What if, what if these signs are attached, affixed directly to the home or reports attached to the home, where do they fall under that ordinance?
Mike, go ahead.
The current current ordinance is simply if it's outside the home, um, then it falls under the temporary sign ordinance Schedule D. If it's on the inside window of a business or again, uh, residence, it's, you know, technically exempt. So if it's on the exterior of the home, if it's a banner that's attached to a balcony or if it's something such as that, uh, then that does fall under Schedule D. Under the current ordinance.
Well, one thing, you know, that the Supreme Court did in this decision, it it took away an ability, I think we were all willing to deal with more signs for temporary period. deal with more signs for temporary period, say a month or so during an election, knowing it would go away. And now with taking that content away, you can easily switch a proliferation of signs from political signs to personal expression signs to whatever you would like them to be. And they might not necessarily go away in that four to six week period that they used to go away within, because we can no longer take into account how they were used. I mean, in terms of their content. So that's the downside of that. That's another thing to think about is they won't have a lot, they won't always have a logical time that they need to go or will go away if somebody, depending on how somebody is using them.
You know, so, you know, I think we're still at a point, you know, as you're looking at the draft before you, you know, if you want to move it forward as it's written, you certainly have the option to do that. If you like to, you know, sub out a different number other than the one that's in there, you can certainly do that as well. You have that, that ability to do that on the fly this evening.
As Marcus said, it was written more on the conservative side. Myself personally, I would start to struggle if it got over four. You know, but that's just my personal thing and how I view, how I see this playing out in the communities, but I certainly wouldn't have a problem with going to four if other people felt that that was appropriate.
I have another question on here, too. How do you determine what the, what the conclusion of an event is? It says maximum duration after conclusion of event, sign pertaining to an event.
Well, they usually post. It's not uncommon for that timeframe to be posted.
You know, I know, you know, campaign signs and all, once the campaign is over, whatever, those signs need to go back to the owner. You know, in fairly, fairly short order. And so that's understandable with the conclusion of that event, but there are other events that, how do you determine that they've been, that they've been concluded? And therefore they've got ten days to get rid of the sign.
Well, I think, I think it's just understood that in most cases there would be a natural end time, whether it be posted or the election date. I don't, I have a hard time thinking of one that would be posted for an event where nobody would be concerned about what the hours of that event were, you know?
Oh, yeah, I get, yeah.
Even if you're having a garage sale, you tend to post the hours.
Right.
But what about some of the signs right now that are advertising for wanted employment? How do you draw the line in that?
Signs on commercial property or residential property? I've seen them on both.
Yeah.
Well, that would fall, that would fall into that category. Now, I've seen businesses usually rely on one principal sign, say like a thirty-two foot square sign or something similar to say that they're hiring and whatever. And then other people have taken the approach of putting those little wicker signs and stringing them out down the entire road and have, you know, eight, ten, twelve of them to try to make a statement. You know, those are the kind of things that we're, you know, that we're getting into. I would rather have them, one reasonable sign saying now hiring and, you know, it tastes a little. It does look a little blighty to have, you know, a whole string of them down the entire front edge of a business.
So then it wouldn't be allowed, you know? Again, we're not, we're not regulating anything based upon content, so it's not a content issue. But if it's, if it's too many,
Right.
matter, you know, it wouldn't be allowed.
So, you know, if people aren't happy with the numbers, and we basically have two in both residential and other districts, we can change that to a different number for each one, or that could stay the same, it could be what it is now, or we could increase it.
I mean, yeah, double it, make it four, make it five.
Something just calling out for the community to say what they think is reasonable. I mean, this is five or eight people in this room telling everybody what is reasonable speech, just, that's the problem. I don't care if you double it or triple it. It's still me saying what's acceptable, and I, I'm not comfortable with that.
To tag onto that, you, you know, you look at how many homes have, you know, on the front porch or leaning in an alcove, you know, a welcome sign that, you know, it's very, very popular. Let's say they have one on the back deck. There's two. What happens if they now put a political sign in the front yard, girl, you know? So there's are very, very tastefully done that will fall under this.
At four, if you post four in your window and four on your yard, you're now back to the eight signs. You know, so. You've got to conclude that people will do, would do whatever they want to do to maximize what they want to do.
Well, sure, yeah, that's true.
I think it's also just, just to remind members of the commission regarding process. You know, so this, this is a public hearing that, that we're about to embark in and realizing that we probably don't have much members of the public in attendance is what that is. You know, we've had, we've had more people attend virtual city council meetings than I've ever had actually attend in-person city council meetings in the tenure that I've been manager for this community, which is over, over a decade. But as I, as I ramble on for just a moment longer, I can advise that, you know, ultimately, right now, it's simply a recommendation as the planning commission moves this forward, or hopefully moves this forward, to then get to the city council level, in which then the city council will be publicly discussing it at least on two occasions, with one of those occasions being the council facilitating and hosting their own public hearing to solicit additional public feedback for it. So it'll get perhaps more of a top billing when it does get to the council level. However, for it to get to that level and for there to be, again, the other public hearing before any of this gets ratified, we still need, you know, you know, a recommendation coming, coming from this body. And I understand that it's almost like, you know, sticking, sticking your hand out, trying to check the direction of the wind or the temperature of the air, and it's, it's very difficult to do sometimes. Which is why, you know, I don't want anyone on the commission feeling like there's necessarily a right or a wrong answer here. You know, we, we perceived that there was an issue, given some of the concerns that, that had been registered with the city, you know, over the last several months. And based upon just our own drive-bys as we look at blight and other issues that we try to deal with on a, on a daily basis at the operational level. And then after consultation with legal, you know, we realized that our, our code frankly was out of date and needed to become in compliance with, you know, with the Supreme Court ruling. And so that's, you know, why we're here today. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with saying, hey, you know what? Two is too conservative? Let's make it four. Or let's make it five, or let's make it five and two, or five and four, or three and two, however you, you know, or three and three. You know, or six and three, you know, maybe six in the commercial zones and three in the residential zones. And then you just move that recommendation forward to city council, and city council has the opportunity to, you know, essentially accept it as it is, or to make modifications, or to provide feedback and remand it back to the planning commission. But nevertheless, at least it moves the item forward to the next level.
We should keep in mind, too, that we're going to be doing a total rewrite of the zoning ordinance, which we got a second chance at rewriting this, and we could certainly look into it a lot deeper at that time. And then it might only be a few months away. So I wouldn't worry too much about the number we set it at. If, if we try it and it works fine, then that's wonderful. If we see any pushback, we can, within a few months, easily change it and not go through horrendous process, because we got to go through the entire process for the entire zoning code anyway. And so it'd be very easy just to make that change and just slip it in as part of the overall rewrite to the zoning code.
Mayor? Go ahead, Ms. Duncan.
You know, I think that, you know, sending this forward to the council, you know, it's, it's a good idea, but I still feel as though there's a piece missing for me, and that's understanding what other communities have. How it was introduced, I guess. You know, did they have public forums so that people were part of those discussions? And I'm not, you know, I support the staff's recommendations one hundred and fifty percent, but this just sounds to me like we could hit a brick wall if we don't do a really good job of gathering all of those, all of that information ahead of time so that we're ready for those discussions.
Are you suggesting this gets tabled and get more information?
I, I guess perhaps I am, but I'd be happy to hear what everyone else thinks, too.
If we were to do that, we would have to limit our search to ones that have adjusted since the, who have adjusted to the Supreme Court rule. Others that outdated that would be pointless to take a look at, I believe.
Well, I don't know that that's true. I guess personally, because you can make anything content neutral. So you could take numbers and regulations related to speech and just make it content neutral. That fixes that problem, so.
No, because they, they would set numbers for them based on content. You could have X amount of real estate, you could have X amount of political, you can have X amount of this. And so you could keep adding those up, and they could get to a really high number.
That might actually tell you something, then. Sorry.
Joe, can you, can you continue with what your thought was there, please?
Oh, I guess, I'm, my thought at the end of John's comments, I guess, is, okay, that's, if that permitted a number of different things based upon content, maybe that is the standard when you add all of them up and make them content neutral. That's where you get to where the community says that's the right number. That's an effective amount of speech that everybody, every normal reasonable person gets to have as much speech as they reasonably could possibly want. And I think to your point, Mayor, I, having some focus on what's been done and also what others have found reasonable as a kind of a community. I mean, this is a community test on what's reasonable and appropriate. And I hate appropriate because I don't want government telling me what's appropriate. We all need to be in this together. That's what's important. That's what this planning commission is talking about, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate, I appreciate that, that verbiage, Joe, about it's a community test because everybody is so hypersensitive right now that I think we need to be careful about how this is introduced. So it doesn't come up as just plainly government control, but it's something that we as a community collectively think is good for our community.
Agreed.
One key there, too, is, I'm sorry, Greg, you raised your hand, I didn't.
That's okay, Joe. We'll get to you. You know, one thing to think about here, I'm looking at this. Okay, so we have a lot of fifty-foot lots in town. Minimum distance, five feet apart, or ten feet apart. Right there's five signs. What if we change the minimum distance to fifteen feet? An enforced minimum distance. Now we're not putting a number, but the stipulation on spacing based on your lot size, bigger lot, bigger exposure. Just a thought. And I don't, just to add to that, I don't know, you know, is there, is there setback? Can you put one right directly on your property line? And then ten and ten and ten, or does it have to come in ten? All of a sudden, we're starting to regulate ourselves just with our distance and your lot size, without telling anybody how many they could do.
That's interesting.
Yeah, it's good thought.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so you don't have any, any minimums, but you simply look at it based on minimum distancing between signs and between lot lines? Is that what, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Let that dictate because, once again, a little bit, like so many things, you know, your lot size, your square footage, allow what you can do with a lot, you know, building wise, all of those things. Maybe that carries more of our guidance.
Well, you know, if, if, if the planning commission essentially wants us to go back to the drawing board, obviously, you know, we'll, we'll do that, and that's, that's a great idea. You know, it'll be well noted from tonight's, tonight's conversation. I, I think we still procedurally need to open and then subsequently close the public hearing, have the commission then further discuss and then perhaps make a motion to redirect staff to, to go back to analyze, you know, some options, perhaps that being one of them. We could then bring it back to the planning commission, set up another public hearing to, to then further, further discuss and explore before bringing it to city council for their review, consideration, public hearing, and then ultimate, you know, decision as to how they're going to move on it. I know that was kind of chunky, but it's a chunky process, so.
I, I think to the mayor's point, that in this moment in time, regardless of your point of view, any regulation, limitation, canceling of certain speech, it's just, it's going to go that direction. It's going to go quick. And the more ammunition we can have as a, as an entity on behalf of the city, and then to give the city council so they don't, I mean, shoot, we can just say, go ahead, city council, you deal with it. I don't have to sit there. And the mayor's the one who's got to deal with it, but.
Right.
No, don't do that.
I like your path that you just mentioned, Marcus, and that the mayor mentioned as well. So I'm, I'm all in favor of where we are in that regard.
Well, and, and, you know, as we, we sort of reload the gun in a sense, members of the commission, you know, we'll, we'll certainly have one of the staff attorneys on the next, or, and actually, it'll be in person at the next meeting. You know, and then they can also advise, you know, where, where the background information came from as well versus having me or John or Mike sort of speculate. But, but not, you know, notwithstanding, you know, sort of that component to it. You know, the concept that, you know, Commissioner Osher threw out there, we'll, we'll vet that out as well. And, you know, if, if that's possible, then, then that's awesome. That gives another option. And if it's not, then, you know, while, while we perhaps maybe back, you know, to the drawing board a little bit, or back to where we're at today, square one, at least we'll, we'll have another sort of go at it, have some additional ammunition, you know, sort of in the background as to, as to what maybe some other communities have done, you know, or are currently doing in terms of how they enforce and, and I should say not enforce, but how they provide for, for the allotment of signage, you know, what their capacities are, what their limitations are, so. Right, so I think, you know, me just speaking, unless John, you know, or Mike has any additional information they want to add, I think it would probably be appropriate for the commission, for the chair to open the hearing, see if there's any, any public comment, close the hearing, and then perhaps do, someone make a motion to sort of do the redirect as I had described.
Okay. We will do that, keep this moving. So at this time, for our virtual audience, if there's any comments out there to assist us with this zoning change, please speak up. We need your help. We need input. Anybody?
Not seeing anybody.
Not hearing anybody. Okay. Okay, at this time, that's not helping. So I guess we'll close public hearings this time and we'll entertain something from Joe or the mayor to move this along. to move this, uh, along.
Yes, I would, uh, move to table the discussion subject to staff, um, making further study, providing additional information and establishing a new public hearing.
John's good, I'm in.
Sound good to me. Do I have a second on that?
Support.
Uh, Mr. Basher, perfect. Abigail, please.
Okay, so I have Bowman and Basher.
Uh, yes.
Thank you. All right. Hutman?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Basher?
Yes.
Filkins?
Yes.
And Bowman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone, for this. Uh, all right, we did the, we have no old business. Board member comments. Mr. Coy.
I just wanted to quickly say thank you. Uh, this discussion, uh, that I've just been listening to is just been really, really helpful to me for no other reason than understanding other people's points of view, because I think all of you know that John and I are the ones that deal with the sign ordinance more than anyone else. And, um, I've really appreciated this convers- this discussion because, uh, you know, I've, I've listened to a couple ideas and thoughts that, uh, um, I just, it's, it's in my head helpful.
Yeah, because your trunk normally has a boat to stuff in.
Some of you have seen the pictures.
Yeah.
Uh, any, any other board comments? Great, we're going to have fireworks. Hey, cool, okay.
Oh.
Go to Joe's house.
Oh, anyway, uh, Mr. Wallace. What, sorry? Nobody. Uh, any communications, Mr. Wallace?
No, no communications.
Or Abby, sorry, should have asked both, okay. Uh, okay, now, Joe, for the big drum roll, the public comments is up. For anyone in our audience that wouldn't speak to us yet, anyway, so any public comments? Okay. No other business and if everybody's good, we're out and hopefully this is our last virtual, right?
Right.
Right.